I make motion.
Second.
All in favor to adjourn executive session?
Aye.
Aye.
I just want to announce for the, or do you want to do communications?
I do have.
Yes.
Under communications, board of education members, you received an email from Mrs. Samansky stating her concerns about the renewal or non-renewal of Mrs. Payne's contract. And that was all forwarded to you through email. You received a second communication from Kristin Ordilly, again, asking you to do the right thing and extend Mrs. Payne's contract and her rationale for why that should happen. And then there was an email from Mrs. Redding, asked to be shared with the board, expressing her concerns about Mrs. Morrow's public comments on social media. All of those emails are forwarded to you in your emails.
Okay, after public comment, the consensus of the board was that there is not going to be any formal action taken tonight, so the next item on the agenda is public comment. The agenda is normally set up to have two public comment sessions, one on agenda items only and one on anything of general public concern, because public comment is the last item of business before motion to adjourn. We're going to combine those into one for ease, so if the next item would be public comment on anything, agenda items or not, and again, just for the benefit of the public, the board will not be taking any formal action tonight. Do you want to write public comment?
Yes.
Also, the board members will not and cannot respond to public comments, public comment only. Everyone will have three minutes. There's no overall time limit, so every individual member will have three minutes to comment. I will notify you when that three minutes is up, and you know, please try to stay to the three minutes or conclude your remarks when I notify you that the three minutes has occurred.
Thank you. Hi, I'm Christina Janis. I'm a member of the Northern Burlington Board of Education. I'm not speaking as a member of or on behalf of the board. All opinions are my own, and I am speaking in capacity as a pregnant resident. I'm going to give the board the benefit of the doubt that you chose to be on the board because you have the best interests of children at heart. And if that's the case, then the decision should really be simple. What is best for our children is to renew Superintendent Payne's contract for at least three years. Many on this board ran on the premises of transparency, but yet there's been little transparency. It has only been made known recently to the community of their intentions to not offer Helen Payne a contract. The community deserves to know why. Was she given an evaluation in 2024? If there were things on that the board thought she could improve upon, you should have communicated that to her, provided an evaluation, and given her time to show improvement in those areas. I have invested interest in the community and school district. I have a daughter who's in second grade, and we're not putting her in private school. So this is where she gets her education, and we want it to be the best. Under Superintendent Payne's leadership, there have been numerous programs that my daughter has taken advantage of. Data shows that our military students and our economically disadvantaged students are doing better on math and E L A test scores than comparable districts. Superintendent Payne's performance seems exceptional. Also, Helen Payne serves as a leader and mentor on MISA and NAFIS. These leadership positions are something that North Hanover should keep to make sure we're getting the most out of funds. Our children deserve the best. I think we can all agree on that. I worry what type of superintendent this district would attract if they didn't renew her contract. What experience superintendent will want to work with a small district where there are multiple lost schools against the district and a lot of trauma? I fear we would be scraping the bottom of the barrel for a superintendent. If the superintendent does not have the amount of years of experience that Helen Payne has, as well as leadership roles in MISA and NAFIS, then they're not the best for our kids, period. So I ask the board to do what's best for our children, our teachers, and our community as a whole, and renew Helen Payne's contract.
Thank you.
Good evening, members of the board. My name is Karen Hallman. I'm a proud North Hanover community member, former mother of students, and current staff member. We stand here today with a critical decision before us, one that will profoundly impact the future of our district, and most importantly, our children. Under Ms. Payne's visionary leadership, a plethora of innovative programs and services have been introduced, driving growth and student achievement that rank us among the top half of peer districts in the country. Ms. Payne has built a district we can all be proud of with modern and enviable facilities and no debt, despite a 30% increase in student population and only a 25% rise in staffing. Her exemplary financial stewardship kept budget growth below regional CPI since 2013, with the average household seeing just a 210 tax increase over five years, far less than our neighboring districts, while delivering outstanding services. Through her leadership, Impact Aid funding doubled from $7 million to $15.5 million achieved via strategic advocacy, legislative monitoring, and optimized applications. Additionally, Ms. Payne secured $5 million in competitive grants over seven years, funding innovative programs like CLOW, Project Peace, and STEM Camp that provide students with engaging, forward-thinking opportunities. Ms. Payne planned, funded, and completed significant infrastructure projects, including building a new 165,000-square-foot endeavor school and renovations to C V Lam and U E S, all with no debt or tax impact. Her leadership during COVID-19 allowed our schools to operate in-person, full-day school through 2020-2021 school year during the pandemic. Her crisis management was publicly recognized as exemplary by the school board Military School Advisor. Additionally, Ms. Payne expanded mental health services, established social worker and behavior specialist programs, and created initiatives like Anchor for Life, which is near and dear to my heart, and pre-engineering STEM project Lead the Way. These programs have significantly enriched student and family support systems. These are only a small fraction of her many contributions to the students and families of the North Hanover Township School District. With all of these accomplishments in mind, it seems unreasonable, unreasonable, that the board would consider ending the tenure of a leader who has accomplished so much for our students and our community. Ms. Payne's extensive career with our district has provided her with a deep understanding of its unique nuances and challenges, insights that can only be gained through years of dedicated service and building enviable professional relationships, excuse me. Unlike many other districts, ours operates under distinct circumstances that require not just familiarity, but also exceptional financial acumen, as she has consistently demonstrated, ensuring the district's fiscal stability.
Three minutes has expired.
May I finish her now?
Yes.
Finding someone who embodies her expertise and commitment when undoubtedly proved challenging, making her continued leadership a critical asset to our community, to not renew her contract would be a disservice to the children who depend on her vision, dedication, and commitment to their success. I urge you to honor her legacy, renew her contract, and reaffirm our district's commitment to putting children at the heart of every decision. We urge the board to do the same. Anything less would betray the progress we've made in the future our students deserve. Thank you.
In relation to the three minutes, I don't like interrupting people, so I apologize for that. Just please conclude your thoughts, you know, at the three-minute mark. Thanks. You don't have to be cut off in the middle of a sentence, but if you want to finish your thought, please do so.
Can I get a second to make this taller? Because I'm going to get us.
Yes. Break, I'm sorry. So, Christian Janis, North Hanover Township, also known as CJ Janis. So, members of the Board of Education, I am asking that you all please support voting against for Helen Payne to be provided a contract extension for three years and help to work with succession plans similar to what was done with Dr. Payne. Here is why. When compared to similar schools, North Hanover has shown to do well in both test scores and financial responsibility. Helen Payne has continued a long, continual run of North Hanover superintendents maintaining respective leadership roles in both MISA and NAFIS, started by Dr. Carson. I have a note from the superintendent of Waynesville, Missouri. Her name is Hillary Bales. She has three schools in the U.S. News and World Report top schools for 2025. She's a highly respected, if you look her up, she's highly respected throughout the country. Her note is, "I sincerely want to thank Ms. Helen Payne for serving as my mentor and guiding me in understanding the impactful work of the superintendent of schools. I am so grateful to have Mrs. Payne as my mentor for Impact Aid and best practices in serving military-connected students. I am only one of two school districts in the state of Missouri impacted, and having a broader network has been critical for me. Her leadership, wisdom, and dedication to improving education for all students is truly inspiring. I deeply appreciate the time and insight she has shared. Her dedication and guidance have not only helped me grow, but also inspired me to see the bigger picture of how this work directly benefits children. I can't thank Mrs. Payne enough for her support and being such an incredible role model and an even better person." So our school district has a population of around over 70% military and around 38%, financially disadvantaged. Ms. Payne does a lot for this district to support those children, all children, but those children especially. You generally have the opportunity to make a lasting positive impact, not just in North Hanover and the military communities, but also Northern Burlington. You heard the Board of Education meeting last week, somebody said Impact Aid is not tied to the person. Such a statement is dismissive of some very important information. Impact Aid is tied to the experience, skills, savvy, and MISA and NAFIS leadership roles of the superintendent. Sorry. If you believe Helen Payne's performance is reason to not extend her contract, I find it to be confusing as the Board of Education did not complete an evaluation of her prior to the end of June 2024 deadline. Of course, such an evaluation would hopefully contain feedback that Helen Payne could have used to improve her performance, but as I noted, the Board of Education did not indicate concern with her performance due to lack of providing her an evaluation. Everything within what I'm saying are my own thoughts. They do not represent any organizations I'm with or any family members I have. So, thank you for your time.
Good evening, school board. My name is Dawn Porter. I'm a 49-year resident of this state, of this county, of this town. My children and my grandchildren have all gone through this school. As a matter of fact, I have a second grader in C V Lam right now. Today, my focus is on a letter from a concerned citizen and staff member of North Hanover Township, and I'd like to read it. Dear North Hanover Board of Education, Google states, "The school board has a dual role to represent concerns of the citizens, taxpayers, and parents to the school administrators, and to represent the needs of the students and school district to the citizens, taxpayers, and parents of the community. It seems like you're only focused on one of your roles, only the citizens' concerns, a very specific group of upset citizens. What about the consistency that this very unique district has? We're a military-connected school. We have unique needs that our current superintendent and her staff understand. I challenge you to dive deeper into the whole district. I question what you know about the students that do not sit in your children's classes. This school district is more than the children that live in your house. Your job as the Board of Education is to think beyond your child. Our superintendent does that. She thinks about all of the students, military and non-military, yours and mine, township and base. One more question for you. What is your true motive?" Oh, boy, I'd like to see the answer to that. "Can you truly say that you're thinking about all of the students and staff you do this job for? Sincerely, a concerned citizen."
Hello, my name is Kira Janis. I am an old student from North Hanover, and I am currently a middle schooler in Northern Burlington. I'm speaking, I'm speaking behalf and concerned educator. Dear Board of Education, as a dedicated staff member of the Northern, the North, the North Hanover Township School District, I am deeply worried about the future of North Hanover. I have worked diligently through many administrative changes that came from individually chosen resignation or retirement. It is my understanding that neither of these things were on the agenda of Ms. Payne. It is worrisome to think that we have the potential to lose an advocate for our staff, students, military, and township alike in education. The North Hanover education system is a trajectory to regain learning loss. We have pivoted with the guidance of Ms. Payne to provide the students of 2025 and beyond with all they need to learn and be successful. We are raising ourselves out of the unpredicted pandemic. Ms. Payne led the way into, through, and out of the pandemic, trying to do what is best for our staff and students. We need to keep raising the task of educating these children and all children. Ms. Payne has been the person who has understood all of our needs. She is the person we need to continue putting the focus back on the education for the students. Dismissing Ms. Payne is a detrimental move for the entire population of North Hanover Township School District. Please consider all that Ms. Payne has done for the North Hanover School District before simply dismissing her. A concerned educator.
Hello, Lee Damato. And I have a letter from a teacher here, concerned citizen as well, the ones that teach our children, right? "I am heartbroken by the recent plans of the North Hanover Board of Education. It is wrong. I teach my students that bullying is wrong. Certain members of the Board of Education have a shady agenda that is personal in nature. They want revenge. It is wrong. In a profession where we teach the students right versus wrong, it is apparent that some of the Board of Education members are in the wrong. As teachers, we correct students, they bully, or if they bully. Who will stand up to correct these misguided board members?" Us, yes, we're going to stand up. "We need to trust our board members, but they are installing their puppets in place so they can proceed with their personal vendetta. It is wrong. Your kids are watching you. Will you do the right thing? Are your kids embarrassed by your bad behavior? You can ship them off out of district, but the truth remains. But seriously, don't screw us over. I mean, we're all from North Hanover here, you know, taking away that financial aid. Ms. Payne has been doing a great job for us. You don't get rid of assets. You keep the assets. That's what my dad always told me. And you're getting rid of an asset for your personal sake? Unreal. Thank you."
Hi, good evening. Paige George Webb, resident of North Hanover for over past 20-plus years, I'm from New Egypt. I have four children in the district, well, technically, one's graduating, one's graduating. One is in U E S, one is in C V Lam. I am reading this as a person who is a district employee and a township president. Use not my words, but I do not disagree. "I am writing to you both as a school district employee and township president. As a district employee, I am disappointed in the behavior of this board and its treatment of Helen Payne. As a town resident, I am embarrassed that you are elected leaders. It is clear to everyone paying attention that one person is pulling the strings on this board, and that person doesn't even sit on our board, our board. It seems that even other members of the board are feel fearful of certain people and are afraid to go against what they are being told to do. As an employee who is in contact with many staff members in the district on a regular basis, I can say that the staff here supports and feel supported by Helen Payne. I know that an overwhelming majority are in favor of renewing her contract, as she has been a steady, fair, and determined leader of this district. This is not the first time that this board has made decisions without transparency or community input. This board voted to simply remove policy 5756 without any public discussion or comment at the March 2024 meeting. This was not listed on the agenda ahead of time, so community members had no way of knowing this policy was up for discussion. Your actions reflect, excuse me, deceptive, excuse me, practices that are not student-centered. It is not lost on us that this policy is related to the same general topic for which one of the board members, family members, is currently suing Mrs. Payne. Most of you do not have children in this school district, and therefore do not have invested interest in our schools or direct access to the wonderful things happening here on a daily basis. You should be seeking out the input of our staff and families who comprise this district. Approximately 75% of our population is military, yet they are unrepresented on our board for reasons out of their control. What are you going to do to seek their input and represent them? As a resident, I expect complete transparency regarding what is driving such a monumental decision, and for you to listen to the voices who elected you and those who do not choose
Three minutes has expired.
but whom you still serve. Thank you."
Good evening, my name is Courtney Samansky. I've been here for about 10 years at this point. I worked for the township for a while in the capacity of an educator here in North Hanover Township, and after teaching here, seeing the community and seeing schools, it was the only place we wanted to raise our family. And so we came here for the Allston School District. And obviously, that still holds true today. We still believe in the district's abilities to achieve higher levels of success and be the school that all kids need. But that doesn't come without an understanding that the board plays an invaluable role in the direction in which the school board heads. And I'm still here tonight to hopefully have you take a solid consideration into the decision that you're going to make next week, I would assume, and the potential impact that it could have for our kids, our neighbors, and our community. And at the end of the day, maybe this decision doesn't directly impact all of you, but it impacts my kids, right? And I don't have the opportunity to homeschool or to send them to private school. I picked here because I love this school district. But when you start to disrupt the function of the school in North Hanover, you're going to not only impact my children, but you're going to impact the other 1,400 students that are currently enrolled in North Hanover Township. And Mrs. Payne has done an incredible job in her 14 years here. She's held such a high standard and has done a fantastic job. We're not asking for perfection. Nobody's perfect, right? But through the turmoil and the hard times, she's just continued to make decisions that not only impact her professionally, but at the end of the day, she sits back and thinks about the decision and the role she plays in the lives of the students that she impacts and the community that is here. And so while holding on the board, it is actually your job to do the same. And so I ask of you, what is another three years? You've heard people talk about the legacy that she has and the impact that she has not only in North Hanover or the state, but through military-impacted schools. Because why not plan for the future? If we are set up for success as we are now, if we can let her do the role that Dr. Carson did to her, we will set up a great successor, and the legacy will continue to live on for Helen Payne, for Dr. Carson, and for North Hanover Township in its entirety. So keeping her for three years is what I urge you to think about today. Plan, build a plan with her that sets all of us up for success. So while you may think that this may be an easy decision, or one that you may be able to just go along with and have no true value in, it's your decision, and it's the most important decision moving forward. It will impact our schools, the other military-impacted schools, and ours forever.
Three minutes has expired.
And so, at the end of the day, when you take next week, I think next week would be the voting time, about, think about all that we, the community, has said, I want you to think about the impact your decision makes on my kids.
Please, everyone, you can't have yelling out from the crowd. Please, everyone has a chance to have three minutes up at the microphone.
My name is Hank Kearns. I have lived in this township for about 45 years. My three sons went to this school, and I'd like to think that the school helped my three sons become better husbands, better fathers, and better cooks than I am. So I want to thank the school board for that and the school. I probably don't know this much about this whole situation, but hearing about what the school board had to go through is unacceptable. Having people call their names, attack their children, their family, that's unacceptable. I'd like to emphasize the fact that our country is divided. And if our school board is divided, our community is divided as well. I hope we all can look at this situation as a family. We're all North Hanover or Northern Burlington members. The way we treat ourselves, treat each other, has a big impact on how this community is going to survive. I just hope that the school board can look at things from a professional way, professional attitude, and realize that we're all family, and we have to act like we're family. Thank you.
My name's Dana Burns. I've lived here for almost eight years. I'm reading this letter on behalf of a anonymous North Hanover Township employee. Dear members of the board, it has come to my attention to many of us within the district and community that Mrs. Payne's future contract will be discussed during the upcoming special board meeting, and with that may come the non-renewal of her contract. I write to you today to express my concern for the future of our district without Mrs. Payne. I have worked other places before coming to this district, and I have never had the pleasure of working under a superintendent that is so dedicated, passionate, and connected to the district they serve. Mrs. Payne knows her staff members. She makes me feel like a person who makes a difference here, who is valued, and she respects my expertise and knowledge. Mrs. Payne takes the time to greet her staff when in the buildings and commend us on our hard work. These qualities are sadly not something I have previously experienced in upper administration, and is one of the reasons I love this district. Mrs. Payne works hard to lobby for additional funding and grants for our district. This has resulted in immense opportunities for our students to engage in learning with movement in and out of the classroom, new curriculums, updated materials, and state-of-the-art facilities. Coming from previous districts where we did not have the funding, I can see how impactful it is to our students and all the opportunities it provides. In recent years, our district has seen an increase in both students with individualized education plans and five-of-fours, as well as students without plans or diagnoses that have complex needs. Mrs. Payne did not hesitate to meet the needs of these students by hiring additional counselors and expanding the behavior team. In doing this, she has directly addressed the needs of our students and staff. Our district has been able to increase the support in the classrooms, as well as increase the knowledge and training our staff receives to support all our students. The dedication to meeting the needs of both students and staff by Mrs. Payne is unmatched and can be directly observed by the success of our students and the feeling of support staff, support staff, including myself, feel every day. I appreciate you taking the time to read this letter, and implore you to consider the importance of Mrs. Payne to our district. importance of Mrs. Payne to our district. She has done so much for us and does not go unnoticed. And I hope that as members of the board who have students, our students' best interest in mind, we'll extend Mrs. Payne and allow her to keep making our schools the amazing place that they are. Thank you.
My name is Joanie Tallow. I think you know how I feel about renewing Helen Payne's contract, so I'm going to use my time to read a letter for a teacher from the North Hanover Township School District. Dear North Hanover Township Board of Education, I am a teacher here in North Hanover Township School District, and I am writing to express my unwavering support for Ms. Helen Payne and to urge you to stop and think before making a decision regarding her contract. Your job as our board is to serve the students, and it is widely believed amongst the community and staff that renewing Mrs. Payne's contract is the student's best interest. Before I begin, I would like to express my concern regarding the recent decision to hold this last-minute meeting to discuss Ms. Payne's contract while she is out of the state, attending a conference that you approved for her to attend back in August 27th, board meeting. Scheduling a meeting on such short notice to deliberate on her contract, knowing she could not be present, raises serious ethical and procedural concerns. Ms. Payne's ability to secure substantial federal funding for our district through a variety of grants is unmatched. To think that another superintendent could come in and secure the same level of funding is naive. Yes, you can argue that one would have access to the same federal funds, but the reality is that you need a leader who is aware of the funding available and willing to take the time to apply for it. These funds have allowed us to implement innovative programs such as the Foreign Language Program and STEM Camp, enhance our facilities, and address needs across the district. I have personally taught in four other schools, but both in and out of the state of New Jersey, and I can say that I have never seen such beautiful elementary schools or had access to as many resources and supplies as I do here. I truly have never wanted for any physical supplies during my time here, because there is something I need for my curriculum, the school will purchase it. Ms. Payne's ability to seek out funding opportunities and manage the budget responsibly have ensured that our students and teachers have access to resources that many other districts can only dream of. Additionally, Ms. Payne's practices reflect that she values student and staff safety as well as input. After an incident occurred in my classroom earlier this year, Ms. Payne personally met with me to make sure that I felt safe and understood the steps the district was taking to address the situation. Furthermore, Mrs. Payne demonstrates a willingness to share her time and knowledge to mentor teacher leaders within our district. Ms. Payne met me to answer questions that I had about school leadership and provide opportunities for me to learn and grow under her and her administrative team. Her willingness and dedication to cultivating leadership among teachers strengthens the entire school community. I thank you for considering the best interest of the staff and students in our district and the positive impact that Mrs. Payne has had here, and I ask that you do the right thing, and I do too. Thank you.
My name is Tony. I'm a member, I have lived in this community for a year. Now, before I begin, I'd like to acknowledge President Redding's opening message to the public. I have been a resident in this district for a year. When I moved here, I attempted to join a local social media page so I could better understand my new community. I was summarily dismissed and banned by a board member's spouse from my association to an individual that holds an opposing point of view, so I am thrilled to know that the board does not share in that spirit. And I'd like to read something from a, I guess, a district employee, these words are not mine, but I do suspect that they represent the frustration that many of us are feeling. Dear North Hanover Board, I am writing as a concerned citizen due to the abhorrent behavior displayed in the last few weeks by the board voted in and her spouses, who have not been voted in by the public, but evidently feel they are still the appropriate person to share information and answer the public's questions directed at the board. I've sat at various district's board meetings, have never seen a meeting where board members conduct themselves in a manner which the majority of you have chosen to. I urge the board to remember that they are sworn in as public servants, an emphasis on "public." Your role is not to support your friend in carrying out a personal vendetta that has no substance. To quote Plato, "Without calling my peers and community members fools, if a man neglects education, he walks vain until the end of his life." I ask the board to ask themselves if the decision they are making are for the betterment of the district, its staff, and students, and community, or again, if they are attempting to save a sworn woman's field. Would you be more willing to send Mrs. Payne and Mrs. Lerner to the denied conferences if they were instead held in Memphis, St. Louis, Detroit, the three most dangerous cities in the United States? Mrs. Payne is known for the positive impact she has made through a lot of meetings at various conferences. Personal feelings aside, as in your personal feelings, anyone can see that the care she has for her staff and students, she ensures their voices are recognized and heard. To Mrs. Payne, we, the community, staff, and students, are not just a number, but human beings. The grass is not always greener. Are the decisions you are making informed or responsive? Are you prepared for the financial consequences? Are you prepared for moral morality amongst the staff and the district? Is the personal vendetta of one worth the repercussions the school and ultimately the students will face? If your answer is yes, then I ask what you will be doing for the district for the rest of your term. I'll leave you with this. Justice cannot be expected in situations where power and strength did take the outcome. Thank you. Have a great night.
My name is Mike Lukeyzie. I've been a resident in North Hanover Township now for about nine years. Tonight, I stand in front of you, not as a representative of what my profession is, and I'm sure everybody here after last week's meeting knows what my profession is. I stand here as a member of North Hanover Township and a part of this community, and I'm going to read a letter from a concerned staff member of the North Hanover Township School District. Dear members of the school board, I am writing to express my wholehearted support for Helen Payne and her continued leadership within our school. Over the course of her time in the district, she has consistently demonstrated a deep commitment to our schools, staff, and students, making her an invaluable asset to our community. One of Mrs. Payne's admirable qualities is her approachability and willingness to listen. She has created an environment where staff members feel heard and supported, fostering open communication and mutual respect. The culture of collaboration has not only strengthened relationships among our educators, but has also contributed to a more positive and productive learning environment for our students. In addition to her supportive leadership style, she has shown exceptional dedication to the success of our school district through her tireless efforts to secure grants and other funding. These financial resources have been instrumental in sustaining and expanding programs that directly benefit our students and enhance their educational experiences. Her proactive approach to securing these opportunities reflects her forward-thinking vision and unwavering commitment to the district's long-term success. Ms. Payne has also proven herself to be an effective advocate for the needs of both staff and students. She consistently addresses challenges and faultfulness, with faultfulness and determination, ensuring that issues are resolved in a manner that benefits the entire school community. Her ability to balance the diverse needs of the district with grace and professionalism is a testament to her exceptional leadership styles. In closing, I firmly believe that Ms. Payne is the right leader to guide our district into the future. Her dedication, integrity, and vision have already made a lasting impact, and I am confident that under her continued leadership, our school will continue to thrive. Thank you for your time and consideration. Sincerely, a dedicated staff member of the North Hanover Township School District.
Hi, my name is Dawn Gogi, and I have lived here and grew up here fifty-one years. Went to this school district myself, started in pre-K. I am reading this from a concerned educator. These are not my words. Dear North Hanover Board of Ed, as an adult, I made the pro and con list before any major decision. I urge my own children to make the same kind of list. I am urging you, as the Board of Education, to make a pro list on the reasons for keeping Mrs. Payne as she benefits North Hanover, then make a con list on the reasons to non-renew Mrs. Payne's contract. I urge you to keep all things professional and leave personal feelings aside. Just a few things you might want to add is the amazing support that Mrs. Payne has put into place to better the students of North Hanover, the amount of funding she has secured to build and improve the structures that our children spend their school days in, the many extracurricular offerings that the students are given to increase their talents, passions, and academics, the curricular materials and support that every student in North Hanover receives to grant them access to a more full education. The list goes on and on. I implore you, as the Board of Education, whose sole job is to support the parents, teachers, and students of North Hanover, to look at the accomplishments of the district led by Mrs. Payne. Signed, a concerned citizen. Concerned educator.
My name is Joelle. I do have a letter from a concerned North Hanover staff member. Ms. Payne spoke a convocation this year about her experience in Salem, Massachusetts. Why would I bring this up, you may ask? While Ms. Payne used this trip to teach her staff an important lesson, one I think the board needs to learn. You see, Salem is home to a beautiful harbor that was once one of the busiest seaports serving as a hub for international trade. It has many world-class museums. It's considered the home of the National Guard. The people are friendly and welcoming, yet what do most people think about when they hear Salem? Witches. Salem is so much more than what it's known for, but if you go to Salem wanting to see the witches, that's what you're going to find. This board has been on a witch hunt all along and has failed to see all the positive things going on in our district. I end with a quote from Susanna Martin, a victim of the Salem witch trials. Quote, "A false tongue can never make a guilty person," end quote. Sincerely, a North Hanover staff member.
My name is J.B. May. I am a four-year resident. I have a daughter in C.B. Lamb, one coming in C.B. Lamb, and I also sub here in North Hanover and other districts. So instead of reiterating things till you're blue in the face, I feel like I could, and I don't know if it's going to change or not, but I'm going to try my best to try and make you see, as somebody who subs in five different school districts, this township is amazing compared to them. These other districts are struggling to get teachers. Why? Why do you think that is? Why do you think North Hanover is... Why do you think we have all these amazing programs and they don't? I am asked repeatedly, "Do you want to drop full-time? Do you want to drop the time? Do you want to drop full-time?" When I sub here, it's only because somebody is sick. There's a purpose behind that. If you guys fully have a reason that you know in your heart not to renew her contract, tell us. That's what we're asking, and if not, I don't have to say thank you.
Hi, my name is Elizabeth Lopez Labor. Most of you would know me by the name of ESA. I've lived here for thirty-two years. Why did I come here? A very dear friend of mine went through the school here. He told me, "You need to see my town, North Hanover, great schools." Didn't have much money, came to this town because I could either afford private schools or taxes. The aid that we get from the military is awesome, and the education our children get from mixing with those children is awesome. I love this town. There are many of you on this board that grew up in this town. You know what the schools were like thirty-two years ago. They were good, but they didn't have that much. Thirty-two years later, look at this school. Look at the school that they built on the base. Look at the programs. My oldest daughter used to say, "Mom, there's nothing to do here but hang at so-and-so's farm." Now they have programs. You see it. You know it. I don't know if you own taxes in this town or have houses in this town, but if you do, you know the taxes. Look and see what Dr. Carson and Ms. Payne have done. Don't ruin it. Have a plan. Keep her a few years, mentor someone with her. Please, don't ruin our district, not for our children.
Hello, my name is Paulina Macaluso, and I've lived here for almost seven years. I don't take this situation lightly as both a parent of two children in the district and a former high school teacher. Aside from the funding issue, I can tell you as someone who has worked in the school, change of administration creates a lot of distrust for the staff. The transition is rarely smooth, and the children and taxpayers will pay the price if you choose not to renew Superintendent Payne's contract. As elected officials, you have a responsibility to the community you represent. It is clear that the majority of parents in the school district support the superintendent and the work she has done. If you actually care about the kids and this community, now is the time to show it. Thank you.
I'm Ella Talone, daughter of Anthony and Joanna Talone. I'm fifteen years old and a student at Northern Burlington High School currently. I'm speaking from an anonymous member. Tonight, I speak on behalf of many who feel silenced by fear of retaliation. The ongoing discussions around Superintendent Helen Payne's contract highlight a troubling lack of transparency and ethics from this board. Decisions of such magnitude were not part of any campaign promises, and the secretive nature of these meetings has eroded trust within our district. The board has amplified a few isolated narratives of staff dissatisfaction without authentically engaging with the broader school community. Regular attendance at events or creating spaces for meaningful dialogue with teachers is absent. Instead, the board's engagement often feels more like gossip than governance. The majority of our educators feel unheard, and the letters only highlight how disconnected this board is from the voices of those you represent. I would love to stand here celebrating our superintendent tonight, but fear has stolen that opportunity from many of us. Instead, I must ask, if replacing our superintendent is truly your intent, what plan exists to ensure a smooth transition of leadership? How will you maintain the critical board seats that our district has... (phone rings) Okay, sorry. What can exist to ensure a smooth transition of leadership? How will you maintain the critical board seats that our district has priorities for over twenty-five years? Previous superintendent transitions included plans to support these seats, but where is that continuity now? These seats, vital to our district's success, now appear unsupported by the board. What occurs at MISA and NAHSIS board meetings that has made these events a priority of all former and Hanover boards? Admit the noise, I want to take a moment of recognition Superintendent Payne. Her over three decades of dedicated services to tens of thousands of children cannot be overshadowed by short, tight, tense decisions. Through her leadership, she has cultivated educational leaders, supported staff, and driven academic success. I urge you not to accept the growth... I urge you not to accept the gross misrepresentation of our district's progress without seeking answers directly from school personnel. Under her guidance, we achieved a remarkable milestone, reopening schools in September 2020 as one of only fifty districts in the nation bold enough to do so. Her courage, compassion and vision have left an enduring legacy that cannot be erased. I urge the community to stay engaged. You have a responsibility to represent the seventy percent of our school community, military families, who cannot serve on this board due to the New Jersey residential requirements. You also speak for educators who cannot risk their livelihoods to voice their concerns. This is a pivotal moment. The decisions you make now must be rooted in integrity, transparency and a commitment to what is best for our students. And also, in my opinion, I would like this school to stay the same as it was when I was a student here. And the way that we can keep it the same is by having Helen Payne renewed. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Olivia Carter. I am currently a freshman at Northern Burlington, and I have been at this district ever since I was born. First, I would like to read something from an anonymous person. First, let me extend my gratitude to this board. Your ability to govern without listening to educators or engaging with the community is truly remarkable. You've managed to redefine public service as something less about serving and more about personal agendas. Your reliance on advice from failed former educators is nothing short of a marvel. Why trust those who've dedicated their lives to students when you can just as easily lean on opinions that align with your agenda? Expertise is overrated, right? And transparency? Well, that seems to be a concept you actively avoid. Decisions made behind closed doors with little regard for the public's trust have become your hallmark. The community deserves answers, but all we get is silence or spin. Trust me, we can't wait to see all your messages in court proceedings. Plato once said, "Good people do not need laws to tell them to act responsibly. Well, bad people will find a way around the laws." And here you sit entrusted with the power to lead responsibly, yet finding ways to undermine the very principles you were elected to uphold. Claiming you fight for your personal police though is definitely not what a school board is intended to do. Rather than working in partnership with us, you've chosen to try and silence, or maybe sue those who don't agree with you. Thank you, board members, for showing this community exactly what leadership means and why this committee must demand better. Your actions will speak louder than your silence, and you've shown us the urgent need for change. In my opinion, I have family friends who are still in this district, and one is only a pre-K, and I would like her education to not be filled by you. I want her education to, I want her to have a great education as I did in this district. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Hi, my name is Robert Simmons. My kids all went to school here, and when they were gone, we moved away. We moved back because my granddaughter and I lived at school here. So I am a resident of North Hanover. I'm just finding out about all this through my daughter, who couldn't make it. As I'm sitting here reading some things and catching up on what everybody's saying, to hear all the residents read letters that people are afraid to read themselves speaks directly to your character as a board. And that's sad. Truly sad that all these people are afraid to speak for themselves, so they've asked the residents of this beautiful town to speak for them. It says all I need to know. I've only been back in North Hanover for five and a half years, but I lived here for twenty-two years before I moved away, and then I moved back. This says to me everything I need to know about what you guys are doing.
Good evening, Board of Education. My name is Terry Maldonado. I'm not a resident of your town, but I am a resident of a surrounding town. I am a former twelve-year board member for Pemberton Board of Ed. I know what you're going through. I've been there. Trust me, I was in that hot seat not too long ago. I will say this to you. Pemberton lost over sixteen million dollars in state budget cuts. And I am so glad that my current superintendent, Mr. Habers, was connected with the military, and it helped us survive a little bit. In those twelve years, six of my last were dealing with budget cuts. And I will say, I've lost staff. I've lost programs. I've lost students. And I turned around and I hit my taxpayers for nine percent tax increase for the last four years just to keep Pemberton schools blue. I strongly suggest, don't lose what you have that is valuable to your district, because you do not know how hard it is to function losing that much money. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Tammy Boring. I am a parent to a child at Endeavor and over, or here at UES. I actually went through this school district as well from like first through sixth grade. I am a military spouse, so I know we don't get a lot of military people here, and that's very unfortunate. A lot of them feel like they don't have a voice because we can't vote for the school board depending on where we get put on the base. So my address puts me in New Hanover Township, which is a place that I can't even enroll my children. However, I didn't want them to go anywhere else. When we found out we were moving back here, North Hanover was hands down. My kids are going here. A lot of you ran on a platform of transparency, and I feel like we are not getting that at all. I don't feel like your own board members are getting transparency. If you have reasons to not continue with the progress that Ms. Payne has made, let it be known. I understand you can't give specifics that directly to her, but your own board member has asked you for a reason, and you guys have all stayed tight-lipped. And that's not okay. You can't ask us to trust you to make a decision for our children when you won't give any response back to us. I know in your board policies, it states that we can ask questions, and you can decide whether or not you want to answer it, or the members have to defer to the president to decide if the member or the president can answer. So it's not a law that says you cannot answer us. You have to communicate with us if you expect us to put our trust in you. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Rose Marie. I've lived in the community a little over a year and a half, but been a resident of the Northern Burlington community for the majority of my life. This is a little new to me. I didn't realize that we were moving into a very divided community. However, I did have a question to ask of you guys. It was brought to my attention, heard before request response that came out, that it was noted that Brian Redding, President of the School Board, would hear a presentation from New Jersey School Board Association regarding the superintendent search. Something towards the, in the event of the board determines not to renew. So my question is, how did Brian feel so confident to ask for a presentation to be made about the superintendent search? It is my understanding that he is not allowed to participate in any discussion about Ms. Payne's current employment due to his wife's current litigations. So why was he starting a conversation about her employment in the first place? That's it.
Any other comments from anyone?
I was going to say one thing. There was another letter that was going to be written from an anonymous teacher letter. I believe that probably was a little bit too aggressive, so I decided to not.
Okay.
I'm just making everyone aware of that.
Okay.
Yeah, it's interesting.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else who hasn't spoken, wishes to speak?
Good evening. My name is Jarrett Zavira. I've been here for almost two years now. I have two kids in this school district. I can say I'm very happy that my kids go to this school district. I went to Lakewood, and you guys heard Lakewood. It's a town that, you know, we lost a lot of funding. We lost, a population took over, and we don't have nothing to offer there. So it's really sad. Now I'm here in Jacksons going through it. Egypt lost them in the school. And I don't want that happening to this school district. I don't want them to lose their funding. I don't want my kids to lose their education. I also have a kid with an ice cream plant, and I'm happy that he gets the support he needs to have a successful education. So please consider all of our opinions, all of our feelings when you make your decision next week. Thank you.
Anyone else wish to make a comment? Seeing none, is it a motion to close public comment?
No. Second. All in favor?
Uh, any opposed?
Exclusions? Next, I'm going to hear any of the business.
Any new roll places? Any motion to adjourn? All in favor? Second.
All in favor?
Uh.
Any opposed? Any exceptions? Which carries?